Okay.
Very good, thank you. Well, the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, October 7th, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a virtual meeting. In the Zoom platform, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others if and when you so choose to. In order to run an efficient orderly meeting in this new virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members even if you are muted and/or your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the legal call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's executive order 7B. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.cigilford.co.us, and also through a direct link on the Planning and Zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on unmuted. Seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address questions or concerns raised by the public. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and regular meeting, during which commission will try and reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will then be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at (203) 453-8039, or emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us after 9:00 AM. Ten, all actions taken tonight by the commission will be by roll call vote. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening are the following members. I'd ask that you raise your hand. Scott Edmund.
Hello.
Frank DeAndrea. Alan Brown. Where's Alan? There we go. Jamie Stein. Bill Freeman. And I'm Phil Johnson. Staff present tonight are George Crawl, Town Planner; Aaron Mannix, our Zoning Enforcement Officer; and Lisa Piambino, Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary, who I do not believe is here. Oh, there's Sean. Good to see you, Sean. Sean Cosgrove is also a commissioner. Seven, that makes us seven, perfect. As our secretary is not here and the vice chair is not here, I've asked Mr. DeAndrea if he would read the legal notice.
Sure. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on October 7th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 situation. This meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting only. Attendees are advised not to go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. See below sign and information to the Zoom meeting. Join the Zoom meeting. I don't have to read that, do I?
No, that's...
Okay. Pass code, okay. The following applications will be heard. Mark Pender, 67, Golden Hill Drive, map 80, lot 10, 7B, zone R5, special permit for an accessory apartment above an attached three-car garage. This continued from 9/16/20 meeting. 117 Seaside Avenue LLC, Brenda and Gary Nuttall. Seaside Avenue and 74 Seaside Avenue Coastal Area Management for walkway to DEEP permitted dock and ramp. Mark Knapp, 94, Great Harbor Road, map 7, lot 7, zone RS-1, special permit and coastal area management application to build a new year-round, single-family dwelling on a lot less than 10,000 square feet. Anderson Brothers, 223 State Street, map 54, lot 4, zone MU/OS, special permit for storage of topsoil, aggregate, broken stone, and common fill, subsoil, sand and gravel mixture. Guilford Housing Authority, 32 Guilford Court, map 53, lot 18A, zone R1, special permit to replace existing sheds with a new 10-foot by 28-foot shed. Copies of these applications are available for inspection on the town's website, www.cigilford.co.us. At this hearing, persons may attend by either phone or web connection and shall be heard. Pursuant to Governor's Executive Order 7B, any material is relevant to matters on the agenda, including but not limited to materials related to specific applications, if applicable, shall be submitted to the agency a minimum of 24 hours prior to and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. And any exhibits to be submitted by members of the public shall, to the extent feasible, be submitted to the agency a minimum of 24 hours prior to the meeting and posted to the agency's website for public inspection prior to, during, and after the meeting. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us. Documents are available at the Planning and Zoning Office, dial (203) 453-8039 for assistance. And according with the Governor's Executive Order 71, this legal notice is being published on the Town of Guilford website, www.cigilford.co.us, dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this 25th day of September, 2020. Phil Johnson, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Frank. If anybody is here for either Mark Pender or Mark Knapp, I'm here to tell you that both of those are going to be continued to the 21st of October. Would a commission member please like to make a motion to continue?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Quick roll call vote. Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove. You're muted. I can unmute you, hold on. I'll come back to you, Sean. Alan Brown.
Yeah.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And Sean.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Those items are continued. First item on our agenda is 117 Seaside Avenue LLC, Brenda and Gary Nuttall, or Nuttall, Seaside Ave. and number 74 Seaside Ave., Coastal Area Management for walkway to DEEP permitted dock and ramp. Who is here to present for them, or are they here to present for themselves?
Yep. Rob Sonnixon is here from Waldo and Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rob Sonnixon. I'm a registered professional engineer here in Connecticut. I'm with the firm of Waldo and Associates. We're located at 89 State Street. With me tonight is Dirk Boss from Waldo and Associates, John Lust, who handled the permitting of this project through the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and has a wealth of background in it. And also Brenda and Gary Nuttall are with us, also sitting behind me. The project's located globally at 74 Seaside Avenue. It's property on the east side of Seaside. The Nuttalls' house is actually 74 Seaside Avenue. It's .94 acres in size. Immediately to the west of the residential property is the property of 117 Seaside Avenue LLC, which is also Brenda and Gary Nuttall, which is a 7.33-acre parcel, which is comprised of tidal wetland area. And on the eastern side and throughout most of the property, and an upland area on the extreme eastern end of the property, which is a result of dredge spoil that was placed on the site during the last dredging of Guilford Harbor. Grass Island is also, they side cast the dredge spoil on both sides. Most of it went on Grass Island over on the east side of the harbor, but a substantial amount of dredge spoil went on to the 117 Seaside Avenue parcel, and it made a fairly substantial area of upland, which is at the terminal end of that property.
Would you like to show the plate?
Yes.
Eric, could you show the first plan sheet?
Okay. Did you want to use the aerial photos, Rob, to show that?
Yeah, why don't we, if you don't mind, if you got them, I could quickly walk through the aerial, the two aerial photos that we sent you.
Sure. You see here, the first one of the harbor?
Yeah. This one's a great aerial view that came off of the GIs system. And the things that I find fascinating about it are that you can actually see the channel. The dark area is the dredge channel. On the right-hand side is Grass Island and the cottage at the end. But most of that area, which is a little bit off that this shot, is a big mound of dredge spoil. Going immediately across the harbor is our property. And you can see the white sandy strip that runs sort of along the shoreline. And immediately behind it, on the west side of it, you can sort of see another sandy area. That's the dredge, that's really the dredge spoil spot. That's upland. You got it right there.
Right there.
That's it. And then proceeding farther, farther west, you get down into a transition zone, which is sort of high meadow, and then into some much wetter area in the middle of the property. And then, as you proceed over to the residential site, there's actually a ditch along the back of that residential site. So why don't we take a look at the next photo? This is a much closer view. You can see the extent of 74 Seaside Avenue, as I indicated. That's the residential parcel. There used to be a small house immediately south of 74 Seaside Avenue, but that has been taken down, and now it is a single parcel, grass lawn area, heading down toward the dashed line on the east side of 74 Seaside Avenue, which is where the tidal ditch is located. Then we move into an area that's sort of a transitional area, which is not wet at every tide. And then we get into another area in the middle where there's another tidal ditch, which is very wet most of the time. And then we transition back out into the upland area. So that's kind of the overview. One of the things that you'll notice, and I want to just mention this as background, and I'll go through a little bit of the permitting history of the property, but if you look on this aerial photo, it's not too clear with this kind of resolution, but in 2017, 2018, and 2019, the Nuttalls had an extensive fragmites elimination project done. And as a matter of fact, they also benefited the town with the property along the northern edge of Jacob's Beach, which had a lot of fragmites in it. Part of the town gave permission to the Nuttalls to include the town's fragmites in their fragmites elimination project. And I was out there today, and it's worked really very well. There's essentially no fragmites that is visible throughout this entire area. And before the project, to eliminate the fragmites, it was rampant. So that was done, and it also is mentioned in the natural diversity database comments with regard to the project that we're talking about tonight. Why don't we put the first sheet of our coastal site plan up? And that's what I'm going to talk to. I think you'll be able to see most of it. I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is sort of, the walkway runs from the residential property across marsh to the spoil upland, and then on to a DEEP permitted pier, which is on the shoreline immediately north of the Jacob's Beach property in Guilford Harbor. So just as a matter of history, quickly, the first permit was granted to the previous owner, Chris McManus, in 2010. And that permit was given by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to build the pier, the ramp, and the floating dock in the harbor. At that point in time, nothing was included with regard to how the property owner was going to get to the pier. It was strictly a permit for a pier. And that permit has been in place since 2010, and the pier was constructed. The pier's out there, the ramp that goes to the floating dock, and the floating dock had never been constructed. And also, there's no, there's no way that the pier was connected to the upland. And then in 2020, the Nuttalls, well, actually, it was earlier than that, it was like 2018, a permit was submitted for this walkway and an extension of the pier because Hurricane Sandy eroded the shoreline and moved mean-high water landward. And a modification to the pier had to be included in the permit to the DEEP as part of this project. The permit for this project was granted by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection on February 21st of this year. The project that they approved is exactly the same physical project that we are applying for CAM approval tonight for. As part of the process, a referral was done to the Guilford Shellfish Commission, to the Connecticut Aquaculture Division, and to the Guilford Harbor Commission. And meetings were held with those commissions in 2017, and all of those commissions signed off that they were, the project was consistent with their commission's requirements and charges. The, and once again, going back, the natural diversity database Wildlife Division had a lot of comments about the project. There are some species of special concern. Mostly, they are birds that frequent this area and this kind of marsh. And many of them, piping clovers, one of them. The piping clover nests in sandy areas along the shoreline, and their nesting period is March to August. And other birds have nesting and feeding periods, all of which run from sometime in March to sometime the end of August. And the condition of approval of the plan was that no disturbance to any of those species could take place, and as a result, the construction of the project will have to take place at times outside of any of the breeding or sensitive periods for any of the species that the Wildlife Division is concerned with. And they, and like I said before, they did acknowledge the fragmites project that the Nuttalls did as being something that was very beneficial to the habitat in this area, and it led them to a favorable recommendation with regard to the project. So quickly, I'll go through what is proposed for the project, starting on the west side at the residential property, if you could go over to that end. The, the project steps off at the yard area behind the residence at 74 Seaside Avenue with a 12-foot-long, 3-foot-wide bridge, which crosses the tidal ditch that's at the rear of the property. It's just a short stretch, but that's what's needed. I was out there today. The tide was going out. It was fairly high, but there was still a lot of water in that ditch. You physically cannot walk through unless you're wading. And so that was the first structure in this proposal. Once you step down on the other side of the ditch, there's an area that's about 60 feet long that is, you can see how the contour is gray down there. It's a bit higher, and the technique that's going to be used to cross that area is going to be a natural pathway, just walking across the natural surface. It's, I was, once again, I was out there today. It's fairly stable, and it doesn't, it only gets wet under very, very unusual tides. So that's, that was permitted by the state to be a natural path 60 feet long. Then we get into an area that's much wetter, and you really can't cross it at many tidal stages, and it stays wet. And there's also another major tidal ditch right in the center of it. And that will be where there's a 3-foot, 3-foot wide, 3-foot-long set of steps that will go up to a raised walkway, which is 205 feet long, which passes across the drainage, the sawmarsh ditch in the center, and goes a about 40 or 50 feet beyond that to a place that the sawmarsh, the marsh area becomes much drier again, and there will be another 3-foot-wide, 3-foot-long set of steps to go back down to the natural grade at that point. So basically, what we have for structure is a 205-foot-long, 3-foot-wide raised walkway, which is elevated 3 feet above the tidal marsh, which is the elevation that is considered to be appropriate for this kind of a structure because it's above most of, or all of, essentially all of the vegetation that's under it. They don't want the, they certainly don't want you putting the walkway right on the vegetation. It needs to get some light. All of these walkways are going to be, have open type of surface so that both light and rainwater will be able to get through. So, and it will have a single handhold, which is a rope type of railing along the edge. And the second page of the, we can get into it if there are questions, but the second page of the application plans show a cross-section of the entire walkway, and you can see just what it's going to look like in profile. Once you step down onto the natural ground, there's going to be 132-foot natural pathway, which brings you to the spoil pile. And from that point, while it's not very clear now because nobody's been walking out there, but there was always a pathway that went sort of directly from that point to the terminus of the pier. So that walks across, it's a sandy area, there's a few trees out there, there's clam shells on the surface, but it's definitely sandy and it's definitely upland. And then we reach the pier. The pier, we're showing a set of steps coming down off the pier that are 4 feet wide and 7 feet long. The stairs are going to end at the mean-high water. So technically, it's state jurisdiction, but it was part of the state application, so we've included it in our application to your agency also. And then there's a 30-foot extension of the existing pier landward because of the erosion that took place along the shoreline. It's 4 feet wide with a railing that is... Excuse me for just a second. I just wanted to make sure that we... I think, I think the railing, the railing is, I believe, 36 inches high. I can double-check on that. I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have, I should have known the answer. It's called out on the plans, but it's a railing that's a reasonable height to protect people on the pier, a fair amount, fair distance above the water. And then on the water end of the fixed pier, the DEEP permit also reissued a permit for the 24-foot-wide, 24-foot-long, 3-foot-wide ramp, and the 8-foot-wide, 12-and-a-half-foot-long floating dock. And the reason that they reissued it was the original permit had two piles holding it in place, and the decision was made that because of the nature of the current and the exposure of this area, that four piles holding that floating dock would be more appropriate. So that, those are the, that is the project that was proposed to the DEEP and approved, and it's the project that's, was submitted to your agency for approval under coastal area management. That's the, I think that's, those are the points that I wanted to cover. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. John, do you have anything to add?
No, not at this point. There's one clarification on the remediation that we did for fragmites. The town parcel is actually to the north.
Oh.
And on the other side of the property from the park. And it's a rather large parcel.
Thank you for that, John. I was under the impression that, I just automatically thought that it was towards the beach. So the town got a significant area of property that was included in that. So the town got a a significant area of property that was included in that. I know that there probably was some at the at the but not a very large area at Jacob's Beach.
If if it helps, I'm just going to do this quick. So this is again the property. I think this is the town property that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
So and obviously, this is all the area that was on the Fragmente was removed. There's the dock and there are the two homes. So I figured I would just do that. We have a couple of letters, one from DEP and one from Kevin McGee. Jamie, you want to take the one from Kevin McGee? Hold on, let me unmute you.
One second here. Great. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, dated April first, twenty-twenty to Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, regarding the coastal area management review of Seaside Avenue LLC and Benda, so typo, I'm sorry, and Gary Nuttall, seventy-four Seaside Avenue, Guilford, Connecticut, oh-six-four-three-seven, Assessor Map, twenty-nine, lot one-sixteen and one-seventeen. This application is for the construction of a boardwalk, natural pathway, and extension of pier for residential. Most of the work being conducted, except for sections of the natural path, are below the coastal jurisdiction line. The applicant received a Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection License Number two-zero-one-eight-zero-six-five-four-five-dash-SDFTW for the construction of a three-foot-wide-by-twelve-foot-long footbridge over a mosquito ditch, a three-foot-wide-by-two-hundred-and-five-foot-long, open, great walkway, a four-foot-wide-by-thirty-foot-long fixed pier, a three-foot-wide-by-twenty-four-foot-long ramp, and an eight-foot-wide-by-twelve-and-a-half-feet-long floating dock. The construction of the boardwalk with an open, great deck will have a minimum impact on the coastal resources since sunlight will still be able to reach the tidal marsh vegetation. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, the contractor should inspect the site daily to make sure that all construction free has been
Great. Thank you very much. We also have a letter from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It's fairly long, so I'll try and get through it quickly. Planning and zoning commission, Town of Guilford, RE, Connecticut DEP Coastal Site Plan Review, Nutt Hall, one-one-seven, Seaside Avenue, LLC, seventy-four and one-seventeen. Seaside Ave., Dear Commission Members, I am writing with regard to the above-referenced application for coastal site plan review received by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protections Land and Water Resource Division LWRD. On August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, we have reviewed the application materials for its consistency with the standards and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, Connecticut General Statute Sections two-two-A-dash-ninety through two-two-A, one-twelve-inclusive, including the following: State Natural Diversity Database Determination Letter two-zero-one-eight-zero-six-four-eight-nine issued to John Lust, permanent agent dated two-nineteen-nineteen, which is set to expire two-nineteen-twenty-one. LWRD Structures Dredge and Fill License Number two-zero-one-zero-zero-two-two-two-nine-dash-SB issued ten-fifteen-twenty-ten. LWRD, the minimus request approval dated two-eight-two thousand-and-eleven. LWRD Structures Dredge and Fill Title Wetlands License two-zero-one-eight-six-five-four-five-dash-SDFW issued two-twenty-one-twenty. Across the tidal wetland vegetation beaches and intertidal flats, the application, the application proposes to construct a footbridge and walkway for shoreline access and landward extension of an existing pier for residential boating access comprised of three-foot-by-twelve-foot footbridge, three-foot-by-two-hundred-and-five-foot open great walkway with access stairs, four-foot-by-thirty-foot fixed pier with four-by-seven open great access stairs as landward extension to the existing fixed pier, and three-foot-by-twenty-four-foot ramp and eight-foot-by-twelve-and-a-half-foot floating dock. Coastal resources at the site include flood hazard area, coastal waters, tidal wetlands, intertidal flats, shellfish concentration area, beaches, and federally listed and state-listed threatened and special concern birds and moth species. LWRD has reviewed the proposal and has determined it is consistent with the goals and policies of the CCM. Based on this review, LWRD offers the following comments to the commission's considerations: One, according to available FEMA firm panels, the proposed the property and proposed structures lie entirely within the special flood hazard area VE elevation thirteen. Two, all work should be completed in accordance with the terms and conditions contained within the LWRD Structures Dredge and Fill Title Wetlands License two-zero-one-eight-zero-six-five-four-five-dash-SDFW issued two-twenty-one-twenty, which is set to expire two-twenty-one-twenty-five. Enclosed therein, they have it they have not already done so. The applicant is reminded to file the Associated Land Record Filing Form at Guilford Town Hall and submit the work commencement and compliance certification forms to LWRD, both prepared by professional licensed engineering firm. Three, NDDB Determination Letter Number two-zero-one-eight-zero-six-four-eight-nine issued for the proposed work expires on two-nineteen-twenty-one. If the work activities have not been done by the state, the applicant must submit a new determination by emailing a request for Natural Diversity Database State Listed Species Review to DEP dot NDBR request at ct.gov. These comments do not necessarily reflect the local and planning, local planning, zoning, or ZBA variance considerations that may apply. We hope these comments are helpful for the commission for reference. An overview of the state's coastal management program is enclosed. You should have any questions on this letter or any other coastal management manner. Please contact me at Jamie Sidorak at ct.gov. Jamie Sidorak, environmental analyst, Land Water Resources Division, Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reeds. Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions from commissioners with respect to the application?
I do have a question.
Shoot.
I'm I'm curious whether there are plans to remove the dock during winter time or are they planning to leave it there year-round?
There's a there's a condition in the department's permit that indicates that the dock is to be taken out before, I believe it's before November first and not installed until after April fifteenth. So it they and it has to be stored in a in an upland area for that time for that time period. And the reason for that, that can that condition is so that shell fisheries can can the shell fishery can operate. There are some shellfish grounds offshore from the the dock location, and they'd like to be able to utilize that area for shellfishing during that period of the year.
And and I I would assume then that the ramp down to the dock will be removed as well.
Right. The ramp will be aluminum. That'll be easy to take out, and the floating dock will be able to be removed and and put up on the upland. At this point in time, we're not certain. There are a number of marinas in the area that do dock removals all along the Guilford shoreline, and that will be something that will be done on an annual basis.
Okay, so my my final question, I'm not going to belabor this, but my final question is, when you say upland areas, are you talking about storing the dock on one-seventeen Seaside Avenue?
At this point in time, we haven't had any discussion. It is an upland area. But I would imagine that the department would have an opinion with regard to whether that's an appropriate location or not. It it may or may not be. I I we really haven't discussed it. I'm assuming that it would probably be, since you're going to have to get a marine contractor to take it out, the chances are pr- are very good that they'll haul it to their docking location. It would be more awkward to to put it up on the
It would be tough to get it up there.
Yeah, it would be tou- it would be tough to get it up there. And even if you could far enough up, it would be subject to floating away in a major winter storm.
Yeah, it it's it is in the flood zone, not that some of the 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 commercial marinas, you know, but put them up, they stack them, they chain them down so they don't go anywhere. I think we could make a a commitment that that would be the way that that the stock would be stored.
Well, I I I think I think you think is great, but I'd like to hear a commitment that you will store it somewhere other than one-seventeen Seaside Avenue.
We'd be happy to have you make that a condition of approval. That would be an effective way of assuring that that would happen.
Thank you.
If just as a side note, if you go up the East River now, right before the train bridge, there's probably half a dozen docks and ramps waiting to be transported up to a marina where there's a significant storage facility, so.
That's BB's up there, and he does most of the docks along the Neck River, and he would be a logical choice. He's the closest operator.
This walkway and bridges and all that, all the way down from the house, all the way down to the water. Is that going to benefit one person or one house? Is it being built for one person and one house?
It is it is a private walkway.
There are two, there are two houses that are going that are going to be benefited. They're all, yeah, associated. So there'd be two, two houses and everyone that utilizes those houses. It's leaving from private property and crossing private property, and it ends up private property. It's not a public ramp.
So that property is being utilized all that area that's for wildlife is being utilized for two houses and going across wetlands and everything else, and all the wildlife and stuff that are going to be in that area are obviously being subject to that. What's to stop the next house over from saying, I think I want to put a dock in, and I'm going to run into three hundred feet?
As a practical matter, this property runs down to the the Jacobs Beach property, and the next house doesn't have anywhere to go with the ramp. So there isn't a likelihood, property to the north is town property. It's not likely that there's anyone else in this area that would have reason to want to cross property. They they have nowhere to go. They'd be throwing out the town property, so they can't really do this kind of stuff.
So all this property is owned by this person?
That's correct.
That answers my question.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Are there any questions from the public for the applicant? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Would anyone like to speak against this application? Okay. I don't know how the other commissioners feel. This is just a cam, correct?
Yes.
So we can just handle it tonight? Good.
Want to close?
Thank you. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Aye.
Thank you. Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman? Where's Bill? He's still here? Good. You okay with closing? Okay, thank you. I got a nod from Bill, and I will also
Sorry, I added to muted.
Don't worry. Okay, we will act on this after our next item. All right. Next application
Get over there, Phil. Get over there. Get over there.
I'm trying. Anderson Brothers, two-two-three State Street, map fifty-four, lot four, zone MU slash OS, special permit for the storage of topsoil, aggregate, broken stone, common fell subsoil, sand and gravel mixture. Who is here from Anderson Brothers?
I understand. Bob, are you here? Oh, come on, Bob. Vinnie said Bob was coming because Vinnie was out of out of town.
It is possible Bob's out of power like other people, but
Could be.
No, I'm here.
You are here, Bob?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Hey, all right.
Bob, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then tell us what you're doing and going to be doing.
Okay, my name is Robert Anderson, and the address is two-twenty-three State Street, Guilford, and we are applying for renewal permit for deposit and removal of topsoil and fill.
Okay. I I guess we could give a little history. Bob, do you want to give a little history of how long you've been there?
We've owned the property for about twenty-five years, and we've been doing this operation for about twenty-one. Reapplying for the permit was every two years, and then this last one we had for five years. And we're we're anticipating on hopefully doing another five years. The property's currently on the market, but it's not really selling, so we're trying to utilize it to pre-coop some of our tax money. Everything's pretty much the same. We haven't had any complaints throughout the entire process. Nothing's changing, so everything there is on file from the past. That's about it.
Right, so we we do have, just to recap a little bit, we do have a history. The property is an MUOS zone, which is mixed-use open space. However, it was previously industrial too, and the zone changed somewhere around two-thousand-and-seven, I think, George, to MUOS, and I think that was a proposal for a a development that never came to fruition. And so, yes, there is a history. What's that? Okay.
I don't remember. I don't, not sure of the date, but that is but that is essentially what happened. And this project, this property's been used in this way at least twenty years. And the most recent special permit was granted in two thousand and fifteen, and it expired in October of two thousand and twenty. So they're seeking to renew the previously approved special permit, as Aaron said.
Right. I I can show you, I can share the site plan with you here so you can familiarize yourself with the location. So it's a landlocked parcel. Let's see. Sorry, I was just going to get you and get a little bigger here. So here's State Street out this way. This is all Foncello's property in here, and this is a a gravel drive with a residence here and a residence here, an access way to this back portion of the property. It's a large lot. It's sort of this triangular. We can kind of see that better on the GIS probably. Phil can probably
I'll get it.
set up. But these are essentially stockpile areas. I do have some photos of of a recent site visit this week. There is, in addition to materials stored out there, there are some machines, there's a screener, so there's some topsoil screening occurring on property. And we do have a a letter from Kevin McGee. I believe as part of the last approval in two thousand and fifteen, there was discussion on a vegetated berm or some type of berm that would help prevent any erosion, as there are flagged wetlands all along this area here. You can, if I kind of see these little X lines. These are wetlands in here, which kind of drops off a little bit. And so I believe that Kevin will be recommending is that berm has had not been installed previously, that that be included as part of this approval, should the commission wish to renew this special permit.
Yeah, so Phil, should I read that letter into the record?
Sure.
Sure. Why, do you have that? Do you need to access that?
I've got it.
Okay.
It is October 6, 2020. To Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, Kevin McGee, environmental planner, regarding special permit, earth removal and storage, Anderson Brothers State Street. Map 54, Lot 4. On October 16, 2015, the government planning and zoning commission approved a special permit for the storage of sand, gravel and dirt on a vacant lot. Condition four of the approval required the installation of a vegetated berm. I conducted a site visit on October 6, 2020 and observed that the soil berm had not been installed and concrete and wood debris are being pushed close to the adjacent wetlands located on the north and east sides. The vegetated berms should be installed within two months of the approval of a special permit at a minimum of 25 feet from the inland wetlands shown on the record plan.
Great. Just to give everyone a little bit of clarity, I'll just do a quick screen here. So this is the parcel itself. It's quite big. And if you actually put in zoning, you see that that's the MSU zone. Here's the wetland. So really, the only area that is being utilized is more in this area. And I'll show one other one too. And that's back to our So here's, if you recall, here with the original location for the pickleboards, here's Adams School, here's State Street. And so it's, the storage and land use is right there. So the parcel kind of goes like this, like this, and then back into that triangular type shape that showed previously.
I did have some photos of the site I can share. So these are fairly gravel. Aggregate, I should say. Here's some of the area here, I think that Kevin was referring to, maybe that might be getting a little close to the wetlands.
And you're sharing the explorer part, not the photo.
Really? Hold on.
If you just make it like bigger thumbnails or something, that might work.
Yeah, well, hold on, I think I just posted. I have too many screens open, is what I
You know, it's amazing. It's dark, it's dark where I am in Guilford. It's light on the Guilford.
All the time. This is roughly the flat area. It looks very similar. We have a few storage of stockpiles throughout the area and a screener and a loader on the property essentially. And there's really nothing else out here. It is set far back off of the road. I did want to bring your attention, the actual special permit that was issued in 2015, did have a few conditions on that and that wasn't brought up at this point yet here, but I did want to just let you know. So you can determine if you'd like to incorporate any of these conditions this go around, should you move forward. They did place an expiration of five years on the application. They limited hours of operation to Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30. There's no excavation or deposit of material permitted, I guess. This was not ever an excavation site, as far as I understand. I think this was more a use of a contractor's storage of materials instead of an actual fill or excavation special permit.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
There's no excavation, strictly stored.
Is the applicant fine with us retaining these conditions for the proposed renewal?
Everything is the same. The vegetation berm has kind of gotten knocked down in the past, you know, over the years, but I certainly would be fine, you know, reinstalling it.
That's great. Makes our life a lot easier.
So can I just ask a question? Was the vegetarian, vegetarian berm, was the vegetation berm put in? But apparently you're saying it was knocked down by something?
Well, it's been, you know, it gets, the weeds get kind of high and it's been kind of knocked down, if you will. It's not really, you know, a berm anymore, you know, a lumpy berm, if you will. The area is so flat that it's almost not needed, but if that was an exception, you know, we certainly could do it.
Okay.
Aaron, do we actually have any specifications in terms of telling them how high or wide a berm is supposed to be?
No, I think that's something that I'm happy to work with both Vinnie and Bob onsite.
Well, Kevin's concern was filtration of wetland. That's the reason for the berm. It wasn't for, you know, looks or anything. It was more if keeping filtration out. But again, it's so flat that very, there's really no runoff.
It probably wouldn't take too much
No.
to create that, some site, some type of elevated area that would prevent any runoff.
Great. Are there any questions from commissioners with respect to this application? Yes, Phil?
So initially, the permit was for storage and removal of dirt and gravel and things. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then now there's different things there like concrete and wood. Is that something that everybody understands is there now or?
Well, I mean, there may be a few pieces of concrete. I don't know about wood, but, well, we store firewood there. Maybe that's what they're talking about.
And was the initial permit meant to include processing material with like a screener and things like that?
It's not really a screening operation. Occasionally we'll screen if we have, if we have the need for screen topsoil for our job. We don't sell earth products or topsoil or anything. It's strictly for our own jobs. So it's minimally, you know, screening is minimal.
I know one of the neighbors sent in a letter. I suppose it will end up being read into the record. So I know they have some concern about the activity back there, so I just wondered if a screener was part of the the process that was understood to be happening there.
Minimally.
Believe that was part of the original approval. And I did raise that question to Vinnie when I spoke with him on the phone. He said realistically, the use of this site, and Bob, you can kind of speak to this too, probably. It could go from, you know, a couple of times a day to maybe even once every couple of weeks. This is not your primary yard that you use for storage.
No, we have a property in Madison. We have property in Killingworth and we also have property in Clinton with permitted use as well for
All right, who's, is that someone speaking? A question?
No, that's coming from Scott.
Where's that coming? Scott? Got it. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. What was I going to say? So the commission has the ability to condition, you know, upon the use of screening, you know, I think the language that was used originally was under the special permit for fill and excavation. I think based on reading the minutes, I was not here for those approvals, but based on reading the minutes and these, there was discussion that there were some, some pieces of equipment on the site. Not that it was necessarily a big operational yard, but I think it was made clear to the commission during these previous special permit applications and renewals, that it was a storage yard and not necessarily a fill and excavation permit.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Yes, Phil?
I know that a piece of property that's adjacent to 227 is potentially subdivisible. So I was just curious about the person who wrote the letter and that was, is that, that's the piece of property? And I just wanted to make sure that he was, his concerns were addressed as far as the site went.
Yes, and I do have, Chris Woodmer is here, who wrote the letter, Bill, and I do have his letter to submit for comment as well. Yes.
Okay.
Chris, do you want to wait and then just address that yourself when we get the comments from the public?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any additional questions from commissioners? Are there any questions, clarifying questions from the general public with respect to this application? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Would anyone like to make a comment or speak against the application? Chris, would you like to read your letter at this point?
Actually, I don't. I don't have the letter in front of me.
I can share it.
Well, I, and I think Aaron and I have spoken, oh, here we are. I am writing to you at this time regarding the application above, which goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission on Wednesday, 7, 2020. I am attaching a copy of the original approval letters dated September 27, 2015, which had four conditions for approval. While I have no objection with the proposed permit renewal, I am particularly interested in condition four, which requires applicant to provide a vegetated vegetation berm. I assume the purpose of the berm was for containment of the stored material, but also as a visual barrier to surrounding properties. And I, that, I, I'm, I was mistaken on that second part. As the potential owner of the property at 227 State Street, I would be most impacted visually by the, by the material stored, storage proposed and would like some understanding of the physical characteristics of the berm. So I think from, you know, from my position, I really have no problem with the storage of materials. I think, I think mainly it's just the equipment that I was kind of questioning. And this goes back to, I thought the vegetated berm might have been, because it didn't really identify where it was supposed to be. So I thought maybe it might have been like a visual sort of berm. But from what I, from what I understand tonight, it's basically just for the wetlands in the rear of the property, none as
It's the rear, the berm was for the rear, again, to keep the filtration from going into wetlands. It had nothing to do with aesthetics.
Well, so I, and I guess, you know, my, my only concern is just the storage of equipment and whether it's possible to locate the equipment further back on the site. I don't know if that's, if there's enough room to accommodate that or.
Well, I mean, you know, if 227 is asking me as a neighbor to park my equipment further to the back, I certainly would not be opposed to that. But there's no storage of any equipment there. There's just a couple of pieces of equipment used for loading purposes. You know, two or three pieces of, and I wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't bother me to park them further back by all means.
Okay, and do they stay there year round or is it, is it just transitional?
Pretty much, but you know, they, they come in and out. Not often.
Okay. I mean, some of this is probably going to fall on me as the developer of that property to, to provide my own screen, you know, on my property, but I just was kind of curious as to the berm and whether it was supposed to do more than just act as a containment barrier.
If it helps, I'll share again just for a sec and maybe.
Although I think also that it is under the commission's purview to, you know, as, as a neighbor at this time around coming and this is a special permit use, you may use discretion and place conditions that you do feel are appropriate.
Aaron, is the vegetated berm supposed to go this way, basically?
Exactly, it's supposed to go.
And then obviously that protects any runoff of materials into the wetlands, which are
The survey line shows the wetland along this 395 length here, where you're looking the northern property line of this little flag out where the material is stored in between Fonticello's property of 005 and this.
This is, is not an accurate wetlands designation.
The survey map showed wetlands along.
Figured maybe it helps and maybe it doesn't. Thank you.
I can show you the survey shows a well in line. Let me see if I can get it bigger here. So. Does the survey map also have some topography? It does not have. Let's see. So this is the survey line. So the GIS mapping shows a little blue swath over in this area of where it's wet. However, this is actually delineated wetland lines here. You can follow this through.
That's where the berm goes.
So this is wetlands as well. If I were going to look at this, I would think that there would be some sort of berm here.
There is a little berm going all the way across there, but the berm Kevin's referring to is to, right there.
So I would think, and this is very, you know, this just gets a little gravel driveway back here. There's really no activity back in this area. That's still vegetated.
No, that's why Fonticello used to use that to access their sign and the back property there, but they no longer do that.
I mean, I would see there are wetlands on, on this east side and this, this north side here. And I would think that if you were going to be needing any erosion controls, they would be along those edges. Now, Chris, would property is divided here. This is the property that Chris is purchasing. There is a parcel in here that is owned by Fonticello's. But his concern is a visual concern of material, of equipment and materials from this rear portion that, that may be a future development in the back.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's not, again, it's more the equipment, I think, than the materials themselves. So I'm not, I'm not overly concerned with the use for stored materials, but it's more the equipment. And Aaron, if you go back to that, to that survey, I just want, I wonder if there is enough room for the equipment toward the rear of the property and if it's okay for, for that to be stored back there instead of toward the front.
In this area here, possibly. It could be screened a little bit more by stockpiles or even in between in here. I'm not sure you have it yet. You don't even have this many piles out there now.
No, those, that was, I don't know when that map was drawn. In fact, the wetlands were, the wetlands on the side there, that skinny little patch that wasn't even on there originally, that was reflagged, I think in 2008 it was. I'm not sure.
Yeah, this was for that 20, 2007.
Yeah, when we had that potential development.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, so I don't think you'd want us to go past where Kevin McGee was referring to with any equipment.
Oh, no, no.
So he'd want probably 25 feet off of the wetland line is what he's hoping to have here. But if you, if you have one loader, and I think that's all that was out there, was a loader and a, and the screener, correct?
The excavator also.
Okay.
But yeah, we could certainly hide it behind that pile where Arrow is, you know, that
That would be
still exists, but you know.
That would be great. And we're always appreciative when applicants are sensitive to neighbors' concerns as well. Are there any other comments against this application? No? I personally am comfortable with waiving the requirement for a second public hearing. I will ask the question of other commissioners, are you comfortable with what's been presented on this to act on it tonight? Alan? Alan?
I am. From what I see, he's not going to be building that lot up with material so he can have cars coming in and buy it, and he's going to load it and take it out. That's not going to be a very busy place. He basically, what he's doing is he's using the materials. If he gets the material from another place and it's reusable, he'll bring it in and store it there for future. He's only going to have maybe a screener, like he said, and probably a loader. He's not going to have his dump trucks there or anything else there. So I see no reason why he shouldn't go.
Terrific. Bill, are you comfortable with waiving the second public hearing?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Good, Scott?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
I am as well. So would someone like to make a motion to waive the second public hearing? Okay, wait a second. Thank you. Quick roll call vote, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote to waive the second public hearing, so we'll act on that. Would someone like to make a motion to close?
Make a motion to close.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to close. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Hi.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein? Jamie Stein, you're good for closing? Thank you. And I will also vote to close. Good, let's move on. We will act on that after we act on our cam.
We have 32 Guilford Court.
Oh, we got 32 Guilford Court first, okay. Sorry about that, 32 Guilford Court. Guilford Housing Authority, 32 Guilford Court, map 53, lot 18A, zone R1, special permit to replace existing sheds with new 10 by 28 foot shed.
Terry Revizza, Guilford Housing Authority.
Thank you, Terry, where do you live?
I live at 34 Patterson Lane, Durham, Connecticut.
Thank you, terrific. Good to have you here.
They also have Larry Robbins. If you could unmute him, he's on the telephone.
Okay, I believe Larry should be live.
Larry, you're live. Yes, Larry. Larry Robbins, maintenance supervisor.
Terrific, thank you very much. And do you want to just tell us a little about what you're replacing?
We currently have two sheds, I'm unsure of the age. And we're replacing it with one larger shed. The two sheds, we have demolition costs enclosed, they've run their life expectancy. We store equipment in there, blowers, rakes, you know, extra pieces of vinyl siding, stuff like that. And we have very limited storage on the property. It's no longer worth repairing the sheds, the two that are there that you can see on the map. Center, there's two small buildings right in this area here. And we're purchasing a 10 by 28 shed.
Terrific.
So in this corner.
Basically, it looks like it's about the same size, just a newer replacement shed.
Yes.
Instead of two, they're going to consolidate into one.
Into one, and this does have a door on it and also garage bay door, which offers more access, a little bit on the side.
We have a letter here from Sonia Marino, R S M P H. What, what, who is Sonia?
Sonia is our new health director.
Thank you, I didn't know that. Dated October 6, 32 Guilford Court, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437. The application for a 28 foot by 10 foot shed located at the property referenced above meets the requirement for 19-13-B100A. The proposed shed does not reduce the potential repair area for an outside subsurface sewage disposal system. There's also adequate separation distance between the shed and the existing systems. In other words, she didn't have any problem with it, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Just need to paraphrase that. Are there any clarifying questions from commissioners? I'm sorry, Terry, are, do you have anything more you want to say or can we move forward?
You, please do, thank you.
Aaron, is there, Aaron, is there any setback concerns with this? It looks like it's right on the property line.
Right, it's R1, they have the 10 foot minimum setback from the site.
What kind of looks, I'm looking at the aerial view, is there, what kind of fence is that?
That was put up by the neighbor abutting the property. It is a six foot white vinyl fence. I don't.
So it looks like there's a neighbor's shed right next to where you're going to be putting the new shed?
No, that would be a dumpster on our property with a map. I'm looking at, that's a dumpster enclosure.
Okay.
Next to ours.
That is.
We have a six foot vinyl white fence open on one side with our, we keep our dumpsters in there for refuse.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from commissioners? Are there any questions from the public with respect to the proposed new shed? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Would anyone like to speak against it? With no additional public comment.
We should close.
Before we do that, because this is a special permit.
Special permit.
Right, would.
I'd motion to waive the second requirement.
That would be, thank you very much. Thank you, Bill. Quick roll call vote, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote to waive the second public hearing. And Scott, you were about to make a motion to close on that.
Motion to close public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Sorry. Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Alan. Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote to close. Thank you, we will act on your application shortly.
Thank you.
So we're going to go back and deal with. 117 Seaside first, and there is a closed motion. Scott, would you like to read that in?
Proposed, voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a coastal area management application for Brenda and Karen Itzal at 117 Seaside Avenue, as shown on application dated 8/15/2020, and coastal site plan raised wooden pot walkway and pure modification prepared for Karen Itzal dated August 26, 2020, by Waldo and Associates LLC. This application is approved with the following conditions, were there?
Yeah, we, I think we said that the ramp and dock would not be stored on site during the period 11, 1 to 415.
That's right. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
We have a motion, would someone like to second?
Second.
Good, thank you. Discussion? I mean, I'm very impressed that it made it all the way through DEP. I mean, I think that's terrific and it speaks to the application itself and their diligence in terms of following what DEP was looking for. You know, I think they've taken all the necessary precautions, as well as, I think one of the conditions from DEP was that work not be conducted during the, call it, the bird season.
Right.
Is that right? So do we have?
We see April through the end of August or September, I think.
Right, and so, Aaron, we don't have to make that a condition of our approval, because those are conditions from the licensing from the deep, correct?
Correct, those are all conditions of the deep approval.
Good, so we don't have to address that, so that's good. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? I'll call a vote, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Alan, slow on that one. Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
I will vote yes, and the motion carries. Enjoy building your dock and your ramp, look forward to watching it. Next one was.
Anderson?
Anderson Brothers, 223 State Street, map 54. Do we have a motion?
I got it.
Go for it.
Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for Anderson Brothers, 223 State Street, map 54, lot 4, for storage of topsoil and other materials as described in the application dated 9/3/2020. This approval is a renewal of special permit issued on September 16, 2015, and all conditions of said approval will apply. The use of the property is as it conducted today may be continued. The approval is for a period of five years and shall expire on October 1, 2025. The following conditions are imposed. This special permit is approved based upon a finding that the activities will be no adverse impact on adjoining neighborhood. The special permit is effective on October 16, 2020, and upon the filing of the town, at the town clerk.
I'd add a couple of conditions, that the conditions of the original, of the last special permit be continued to the current special permit, and that a vegetative berm should be installed within two months per the request and recommendation of the environmental planner.
And you had mentioned potentially parking equipment on the east side of the property. Was that something that the commission wanted to entertain?
That seems awfully specific. I think it's better if it's just an understanding.
I think, you know, I think it's pretty clear that when this comes up again in 2025, if there are big complaints about that, that it's in everyone's best interest to cooperate and live together. So I'm, I'm comfortable with their word that they will try and, you know, move them to the other side of that berm, or to the other side of that.
It's going to be a situation where they're going to load it up with power equipment. They're just using it for a location to store materials that they picked up from another place, and they're planning on maybe taking it out in the future to go somewhere else. So have probably a loader in there then, and they probably won't have the loader there all the time, because you're probably going to need it on jobs. So I don't see that place being over, over re.
I would just remind the commission that a special permit does run with the land and not the particular tenant who is occupying. So should there be a concern in the future if that did change hands? The property is on the market, and if a special permit is valid for five years, that may be language that the commission would want to include that could be enforced.
It seems unrealistic that we would limit the amount of equipment that could be on the property, not necessarily where on the property the equipment could be stored.
No, I don't think that would.
I also, I also think that if this property is for sale, that we ought to limit this condition to them still owning the property, if they sell the property.
I don't think we can do that, because it goes with the land, it doesn't go with the owner. Yeah, right.
You have the ability to impose specific screening if you feel it could affect neighbor, neighboring properties or hours of operation, types of activities, you know.
The fact that we haven't received any negative comments to that effect speaks to the low activity and volume on the site. So I'm, I've, you know, with, I don't want to make up complaints that, that haven't been brought forward, so.
Doesn't the permit also speak to the adverse impact of joining neighborhood? How does that, if the neighborhood, if something comes up like that, how does that, how does that affect the longevity of, of the permit?
Well, it does.
It would have to be addressed when it comes up again in 2025. Right?
Yeah, they have to reapply in 2025 for a renewal of the special permit, at which time.
I think that, that language typically at the end is our explanation for why we're approving it, typically, all right, Aaron? The language of this activity will not adversely impact adjoining neighborhoods, that's kind of our reason of the commission that we're approving it, right?
Right, you've made a finding that it's consistent with the.
Okay.
Area.
So it currently is that, all right.
Which it appears to be based on the lack of comments from neighbors and as Phil said, you know, absent complaints.
I don't, I don't, I guess I wonder why you can't just put in there that they would park their equipment is, you know, to the eastern side of the property or something. I don't understand why that's a negative.
I think it's a good neighbor, he's going to do it anyway, he already brought that up. I don't think we need to keep adding on to this thing anymore.
I mean, I guess, Bill, the only, you can't really say, describe to the east, because there's a huge parcel to the, to the east, right? You could maybe require them to do a new site plan that specifies a certain area where they park. But that's what you'd have to do, I think. You can't, I don't know if we can really describe it in words.
You could describe as it is bound by wetlands on that eastern side, and Kevin McGee was recommending that a berm be installed a minimum of 25 feet from that wetland line. You, I think you could describe it best to that way. You're right, it's not shown on a site plan. That's, that's up to you.
You know, I, I think I'm comfortable with them, you know, professing to be good neighbors and moving forward with it.
I agree.
We have a motion from Alan, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Or we'll call a vote then. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So we will renew the special permit, please make sure to file that with the town clerk, so it will be effective. Finally, we have the Guilford Housing Authority and the 10 by 28 foot shed. Would someone like to make a motion?
Do we, do we read the record yet? Was it written?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't made, no one's made the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second?
I think we have to read it in. Bill, I'm taking back your second, I'm sorry.
I don't know what you guys are doing, it's quiet.
Would you like me to read it?
I've got it. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit application for the Guilford Housing Authority at 32 Court, map 53, lot 18A, to replace existing sheds shown on site plan, site plan showing proposed walks and parking Guilford Court, prepared by Anderson Associates, amended by GHA 82020. The application is approved with the following conditions, there aren't any, this application is approved based on a finding that it conforms with the zoning code and the proposed activities will have no adverse impact on adjoining property. The special permit is effective on October 16, 2020, and upon filing with the town clerk. Would someone like to second that? Thanks, thanks, Bill, I got you there. Any discussion, any concerns? Good. I'll call the vote, Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes, yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, enjoy your new shed. Good.
Thank you.
Got to do that. So coming up, we got Park and Rex Commission, 1350 Durham Road, for the construction of the pickleball courts, that's on 1021. New applications, Kevin Ginty, 324 Three Mile Course, that's going to be on November 4th. Amy Goldfarb, 49 South Fair Street, special permit for accessory apartment on November 4th. Chris Widmer, 227 State Street, special permit. special permit request for lot split and creation of an interior lot per section 273. That's on November 4. And would someone like to make a motion to approve our minutes from the last meeting? I read them and they do appear to be substantially correct. Bill? Yeah. Bill, on those new applicants, you should, you should vote to receive and set public hearing dates. You could do it maybe in one, but in one motion.
Same.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the new applications and public hearing dates? Thank you. Scott Edmund? Or Scott? Thank you. Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Thank you very much. Onto our minutes. I had read them. They appear to be substantially correct. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
I wasn't there, so I'm not sure if I'm entitled to a.
Sure. You could just abstain.
Abstention.
And that then does pass. With no further business before the Planning and Zoning Commission, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Don't all do it at once.
Come on.
Second.
Thank you. By a hand vote, all in favor of adjourning for the evening.
Bye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
You.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
And watch the debate.